This conference will now be recorded.
To change the brightness on my, on my video camera.
Add it for a second.
I'm gonna get a new video camera anyways. Okay, we're ready to begin, okay, right, I'm going to open the February the 22nd council meeting. So we begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item on the agenda will be to consider to approve the consent agenda, which has the minutes in the statement of the bill's date.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go ahead and approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we gave that to Chuck, I think, Chuck Stites, okay. It's been moved to second to approve this consent agenda with the clerk, please call roll.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Thank you. Zach, do we have any requests or comments from the public?
We did not have any lodged ahead of time. I posted it in the chat now. If there are any public comments from guests or viewers, please leave your name and I'll recognize them. I'm not seeing any.
Okay.
And I don't, I see a couple of guests, so I will take it. I'll leave it, give them about 20 seconds to respond to that, and if not,
Okay.
here like we will have any. And I'm looking at coming in.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is to reconsider acquisition of parks and public workspaces, maintenance vehicle using funding through special sales tax fund.
Yes, sir. What's before you is the consideration to purchase a, a parks and public spaces maintenance vehicle. This purchase was actually included in the 2020 budget whenever the council made the decision to add an additional grounds position in the, in the Parks Department that would take care of not only the park but other shared spaces, the cemetery, right away, community center, things like that. Last year, there was a number of special sales tax purchases that were kind of deferred, just as we were waiting for things to shake out related to COVID. And also, the transition from the staff member that we moved from public works to the ground position wasn't really formalized until the last quarter of the, of the year in 2020. So this purchase actually carried over from that. Initially, we had budgeted our estimates for a, to purchase the vehicle through a lease purchase agreement like we typically do with our, our vehicle purchases. And looking at the, the, the current state of the, of the fund as we kind of detail in the, in the budget presentation at the last meeting, because some of those items were deferred in 2020, the fund balance for 2021 was actually higher than what we had anticipated that it would be because we had deferred some of those purchases. They're not made purchases out of the special sales tax fund. And so when reviewing that, it kind of made more sense with the fund as it is right now to just do an outright purchase of the vehicle. And that way, we'd be able to avoid any additional interest or financing charges or, or anything like that. There are specs of the vehicle are, are detailed in the, in the background. Essentially, we're looking to purchase a Ford F-250 crew cab four by four. Both our, our park supervisor and the grounds provided input into this as well as the public works director. This will have some shared use between the departments, but primarily it's going to be used in the Parks Department for, for that grounds maintenance purposes. If you have any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer them and I can refer to the public works director. If you get some technical questions related to the vehicle specs, with that, I will myself up for questions.
Zach, will this truck stay in the city? It won't be a take home vehicle or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Where's the vehicle being purchased from?
From Shawnee Mission Ford. It was part of the Midwestern Council Public Procurement Cooperative Purchasing Group. So that, out of the ones that it submitted, responses to that bid package, these were the, and the, based on the specs that we needed, that was the most affordable.
Is, is the price for that $32,979? Am I reading that right?
Yes, sir. And that backs out, the only thing that, from the initial quote that we put out, it backs out the, the snowplow prep and installation, which, because we'll get the vehicle sometime at the, at the end of spring, or in the middle of spring, I should say. There's not really going to be a need for the snowplow equipment, so why burn up warranty time for a piece of equipment we probably won't use until that part of the year.
Surely.
We'll eventually go back and, oh, go ahead.
You're asking to, you're asking to approve $32,979 for this vehicle, correct?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of $32,979.
A second to motion.
Okay, so we do have a second from Chuck Stites, is that correct?
Chuck Adams.
Okay, Chuck Adams. We have a motion to approve the purchase of a public workspaces maintenance vehicle for $32,979. Would the, if there are no further questions, would the clerk please call roll?
Malot?
You're on, you're on mute, Councilman Malot, sorry.
Sorry about that, yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. The next item is to consider authorizing the acquisition of a new ambulance from American Response Vehicles and adoption of Resolution 2021-02, authorizing as the city manager to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Union Bank and Trust to financing of said equipment using funding from the special sales tax.
Mayor, council members, before you know it, is a recommendation to purchase an American Emergency Vehicles, Toronto Hawk Ambulances, including all the associated equipment and the adoption of Resolution 2021-02, authorizing the financing for the same. As both of you are aware, we started an ambulance service in July 2014. At that point in time, the city had purchased two remounted ambulance boxes on cabin chassis with the original intent within two to three years to start the replacement out of those cabs and chassis to purchase new ambulances. However, due to the fleet of other fire apparatus and everything else, we had prolonged, this time, we had gone out and looked at four ambulance manufacturers, HGC, come back with a price tag of $232,636 from special, from special sales tax. This does not include the installation of radios or other loose equipment, which is an additional $5,000 is estimated. However, that $5,000 is not put into the financing for the ambulance package itself. Of the four dealers, AEV come back with the most competitive price as well as the best warranty for the body being 20 years. Our recommendation, it is for the council to approve Resolution 2021-02, authorizing the city manager to sign into a five-year agreement with Union Bank and Trust the financing of $232,636. It's the first payment starting in October of this year. The final payment is scheduled for October of 2025. And the interest rate that we got from UBT was very competitive at 2.99%. If there is any other questions, I'll be, I'll be willing to take them at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I make, I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to enter into a lease agreement as stated for the, what is it, the, the amount? For the $232,636 for the ambulance.
One question, please, Mr. Mayor. What was the interest rate from the competitive people?
It was, this is Mr. Webb, it was 3.05. So we did look, both of the, so we typically go to Union Bank and Trust and NBH, which is a division or the owners of Bank Midwest. Those are the two banks we do business with. So we ask, we always ask them to provide on the same thing, so interest rate, opposing date, the amount, and then if there's any other expenses. Because sometimes, one or the other will have opposing costs or other expenses. Between the two, I think the amount of difference is around $91 over the life of the five-year. So very competitive.
Yes, thank you for that, and I would like to second that motion, please.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the acquisition of a new ambulance under the Resolution 2021-02 from the special sales tax fund for the amount of $232,636. Are there any more questions? Okay, if not, would.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I had to get myself off of mute. Chief, what is the average lifespan, just an average lifespan, of a brand-new purchase like this?
It, it really depends upon the wear and tear and the abuse of the vehicle. We are anticipating at least seven years on the cabin chassis for this four-wheel-drive pickup truck cab chassis. However, our plan going forward is to remount the ambulance bodies on a new cabin chassis. So with a 20-year warranty to the manufacturer on the body, you would get about seven to eight years of use on the cabin chassis, send it back and remount the body to the new cabin chassis, have it reworked for about 40% of the cost of a new ambulance.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay, if not, would the clerk please call roll?
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda will be to consider authorizing the purchase of a digital message board utilizing CARES Act funding.
That will be me presenting item number five. Good evening, everyone. This is Dusty, Public Works Director. My recommendation is for city council to consider authorizing the purchase of a digital message board. This is utilizing the CARES Act funding. We previously had presented a list of items, this was on it. The CARES Act funding has already been received and is due to be utilized by the end of March. So it's a little bit time-sensitive to get this done. The, we had discussed additional signage to help notify residents for vaccination testing sites, upcoming community events, traffic notifications, et cetera. Typically, we do a seal bid on these, but with the, there's a couple scenarios here with the time-sensitive scenario. And then also, we reached out to three vendors that are all Vermac vendors. I had contacted several local agencies that use message boards frequently. And, and Vermac seemed to be at the top of the list of several. Those are very competitive and the price was kind of comparable. So then we reached out directly to three suppliers of Vermac brand-specific. They were all competitive pricing there as far as across the other brands. Vermac was the only one that offered a remote access so that it could be accessed and changed from computer remotely. The others, you had to add additional cell plan type thing to them. So that was kind of a unique thing with it. So with that, the WorkZone quote was $15,975, Decker Supply at $16,000, Vermac USA at $16,800. Staff would recommend the city council authorize the purchase of Vermac Digital Message Board from the WorkZone for the cost of $15,975 to be budgeted out of the CARES Act funds.
Thank you, Dustin.
Um, I just had a, one of the questions is, it says the Vermac bid was 16,8, but then the WorkZone was 15,975. Is that, am I just confusing that? So it's the Vermac sign from WorkZone, not from Vermac, is that correct?
Yeah, Vermac USA is the name of the dealer. On, so those are the three names of the dealers that are dealing the signs. The one is, and then the work, yeah, the WorkZone is the one that, with the lower price, I guess, locally.
And is this a portable sign or one that'll be fixed in one place?
Yeah, it'll be portable. It also has data logging. It can, it does some traffic analysis. It has some capabilities, radar, data logging, and the modem is what makes it remote connective. So yeah, it's a mounted unit.
So it's, it's portable. And could you describe the size of the sign? And if it's, like, is it multi-colored? What's the screen like or, or the letters and things like that?
It's not multi-colored. The sign, I believe, is 78 by, I don't have that right in front of me. I can look real quick.
While, while you're looking that up, how come we're not going with the colored, multi-color? I thought that that was one of the things that we had really talked about wanting so that it can change with seasons and, and messages and such.
I guess I will, I think we had some other discussions. I think, maybe Michael, you can help me with this. But a different type of sign for the actual, different type of messaging we wanted to do for, for that. This is more through the CARES Act funding for quick communication on the road, I guess.
I think there's quite possibly, if I'm not mistaken, Dustin, on the, on the, on the mobile ones, they don't come in color. Is that correct? I know the stationary ones do because they're a different type of sign, so.
And yeah, that's my.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's the difference. I think the, the conversations we've had about, you know, the multi-colored and, you know, a little bit more functionality were based more on that, that static sign, which is a project we're still exploring. This is more for, we've got the funding for the, this digital signage that was identified as a priority. And if we want to move forward with it, now's the time to do it.
I think I would, this was Mike. So, I mean, there are colored versions that are probably limited in color, red, blue, yellow, kind of your primary colors in there. I think it probably adds about $8,000 in cost, if I recall right. Dustin may know better than me. But, you know, as far as the, the purpose and uses to try to get those kind of flash messages out there. It is a trailer-mounted system and it's, they have both, they have different sizes. Many, kind of the standard and the max, I believe this is kind of the standard messaging board. So it's roughly, I want to say around four by eight as far as the message board, five by 10, something like that. And again, can be changed remotely, which means that it can be changed, you know, very quickly.
It's 45 by 80. Sorry, 45 by 80?
Roughly, roughly the, not quite, you know, four by eight as far as the signed board portion. And we're still, we're still moving forward with the fixed EMC sign. So I spoke with Chris today of the young signs and they're just a little behind with some issues that've come up. But so that, that we're still progressing with that. We, we could upgrade this to color, but I think it probably adds about $8,000.
Yeah, I didn't even pursue that with this unit. And they do, they size them depending on speed somewhat. So on the interstate, you're going to use a lot bigger sign just to make it readable. For a lot of our roads, we don't want it too big, I guess, was the, was the thought.
What was the price difference between the portable trailer sign or a fixed sign that we put like along K-32?
The fixed signs we've been looking at are around $60,000. So the.
And correct me, was, I mean, this is, the portable version was kind of what was listed on the CARES Act application, I believe? Is that correct?
That's right. Originally, we were looking under our general communications to have two message boards plus some outsourcing information, testing and some things like that. We kind of pulled that back and decided that we would focus on a portable sign and add the, the permanent sign, again, looking at that general location of Fort and K-32. We have to be outside the right-of-way. If we, quite honestly, if we could update our existing signs with digital signs, that would be a preferred method, but that's just not an option from, from K-32. Number one, they won't let you put digital signs in the right-of-way. And, and two, they just have more control over that right-of-way. So even changing out those signs, we may be limited even replacing signs. That, that was the reason for the portable sign. It adds, again, data collections, et cetera. But we're oftentimes limited where we can put the sign. So again, we, we kind of went with the typical-sized sign, smaller than what you would see on an interstate. But obviously, there's more room in interstates and, and you need the larger lettering for, for the speed. It's going 70 miles an hour versus typically, we're 35 to 45 mile an hour. I mean, I realize K-32 is a little bit faster than that. Overall, probably the portable signs.
Are we leaving?
Can you remind me?
Money on the table?
Repeats the question.
Are we leaving any money on the table from the CARES Act?
Absolutely not.
That was the same question.
Yeah, we will, we will expend all of the funds. We may have to, we may have, as we spoke before, we may have to move some of those funds back into a general fund account to capture them. The way the CARES Act was drafted in that first round, you can use all of your costs associated with public safety personnel as an eligible expense. So we may have to change, quote, our plan that we submit back to the county before March, or I think it's the end of March. But we've been using the CARES Act funds, the items we've talked about. The signage is one of those. We completed the improvements in the police station just this week for the, for the booking room, et cetera. And we moved in actual expenses, we had about $150,000, some odd thousand dollars. We also got money through a FEMA grant that was also tied around emergency response. Did not fund as much as we initially thought. So we'll, we'll transfer some additional dollars to cover actual expenses. And of course, those were expenses up through July at the time. So we'll look to see what other expenses we've had post-July through the end of the year. But we will not leave money on the table.
How much did we have in that budget for signage?
I don't have it in front of me, but it was approximately, I, I want to say it was around $65,000 total, 60 to 65,000 total. It may be off of that. We knew we were going to go over with the fixed sign and the portable sign. But we have savings in other areas, such as in the fire department. We purchased sterilization-type equipment that came in less than we thought. So we can move the money around within that CARES Act fund, which is actually a separate fund in our, in our overall budget, so you can see those totals. So we can move between projects without having to go refile or ask for additional permissions. We can move, move around as long as the, when the general scope that we initially requested.
So, so we budgeted in that, though, or along the lines of a permanent sign? And then we switched it to temporary?
Actually, we initially budgeted for two temporary signs plus some third-party assistance on, on, I guess I'd call PR, communication. That was originally how we put that together. And at somewhat the discussions and directions of the council, we moved back, moved over to doing a permanent sign along with one portable sign to try to get that in that general budget. So overall, we'll, we'll be able to do both of those. But that, that's, that's where we're at right now. And originally, it was portable signs, not a permanent sign. But that was where the sketch began to instead invest in the permanent sign.
So we'll have CARES Act funding to cover both this sign and a permanent sign?
Correct.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, is there any status on the northwest corner of 32 and Fourth Street where the big for sale sign is?
Uh, we have not been able to make contact with that property owner, but I have not tried to reach out to the, to the realtor there. We've mainly been, on the north, you mean on the northeast?
Northeast, yes, the northeast. Can I say the name, Lois? That property?
I don't believe that that's an option. I've had conversation. I don't believe that's an option.
We've been focused on the northwest corner, pushing it back a little bit to get it outside the right-of-way line and be basically right on it. And so that's what we were working on. Pushing the sign back, we lose a little bit of visibility if you're going eastbound on K-32. But you'll still be able to see it north-southbound on Fourth Street and going west on K-32, which, quite honestly, that's probably relative to local traffic. You know, having visibility north and south is probably our, our highest areas. You have roughly 3,000 vehicles a day turn and go south from K-32 that are going westbound and then they turn and go south. And about 2,000 that turn and go north from K-32 west. So I think if you capture three of the four, and no matter where you put it, you are going to lose some. Went to the, if you went to the opposite side of the road, you would have less visibility going westbound until you got right to the sign. So it, it's not the perfect corner for a signage as it sits, but I mean, that's our best option. And again, we're going to put up a kind of a temporary sign so everybody can see it and make sure before we invest that much money that it will in fact serve the needs that we've been discussing. And that's really what we're trying to finalize right now.
Which you're talking the $16,800 versus $60,000 for a permanent sign?
The permanent sign, yeah, is roughly $60,000. And this one's, right to say, 16. It actually, so this particular sign, you know, the benefits is we can use it, you know, if we, if we're doing something like the, the, the food drives or activities we do down at the community center, you know, we could set the sign up in different places. The, you know, some of the quarterly events we're trying to do with parks, we can use this sign there. We can put it down on Wood End Drive. We can put it, you know, in a number of places and, and get that. And while it's there, we can also use it to gather data on, you know, speed data, traffic count data, those types of things. We don't have to, but it has that built into it. So it gives us also information that we may want to use. And amazingly, maybe it's not a speed trailer, but I mean, the message could be simply slow down. And amazingly, maybe it's not a speed trailer, but I mean, the message could be simply slow down at the same time.
You know, I would, I would be more, I I would feel more comfortable if I could see this instead of just talking about it. I'd kind of like to see what it what it looks like. Is it just a black and white TV, LED lights or what? You know, you're saying it's not color, it's not an eye catching thing? And does it have camera capability? If the police would use it or whatever, you know, I I need a little bit more description on what this is rather than just a trailer sign like our speed sign, you know what I'm saying?
Zach, can you?
Zach, can you pull something up?
But I was just about to say that, yeah, let me let me pull up what we've got. And I also, I also have a question here, Mike. So this is time sensitive, am I correct?
Yeah, because we're we're trying to get as much spent on those CARES dollars within the timeframe that we have, uh which got extended from December thirty, so.
So I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that this is a sign that we're going to be utilizing throughout the city. This has, this is not in lieu of our monument sign that we're talking about that's going to be stationary and in place. And and um um this is, this is just something that we're going to utilize throughout the city for multiple uh reasons. Um I I go ahead and make the motion that we approve the um. Zach, can you go back to the, back to where it was at so I can make this motion and looking at it, sorry? Uh to make the motion. Do you authorize the purchase of digital sign message board utilizing CARES Act fund dollars?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more questions or comments?
Yeah, you say this is, this is not jeopardizing a permanent sign, is that correct?
Absolutely, that is correct. Zach, go ahead and put the picture back up just so we have it, please.
I didn't have it long enough to look at that.
It's the, it'll be the white one. They're the same essentially, but it will be the white trailer.
And what, what powers that? Is that a gasoline, like a Briggs engine on there or something?
No, it's solar powered and battery operated.
Yeah, they don't bring it on those things.
You might, just quick, uh for the for the motion that was made, just might mention the work zone on that. The the specific one.
Okay, I'm ready to vote. I'm I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
All right, if there are no further comments or questions with the clerk, please call roll.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
A R.
Yes.
Hey, thank you all. All right, the next item on the agenda will be consider motion to recess into executive session according to K S A seventy five forty three nineteen B six for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we recess into executive session in accordance with K S A seventy five forty three nineteen B six for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property. To, how long do we need, Michael?
Um, I would say at least fif, I'd say fifteen minutes. So if we said, uh, it looks like we're six thirty three, so. Uh, I don't know, six.
Six fifty, six fifty five, give us a little extra time.
I think, I think we can get it done by six fifty, but it's up to you, so.
Okay, six fifty then.
Okay. Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to going to recess in the executive session under K S A seventy five forty three nineteen B six for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property until six fifty. Would the clerk please call roll?
Uh, yes, sir. Before I do that, I just want to let the folks who are listening in know what the process will be. So I'll dismiss everybody and they can they can exit out of the how their browser, their their phone, or however they're listening to. At that point, I'll lock the meeting until six fifty. And with, and then I will unlock it. And if they want to to join back into the meeting, they can do that via the same links that's been distributed out there. So that way people know what to do once, once we, once we do that. So I'll go ahead and roll call. Throw a lot?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
A R.
Yes.
All right, give me a sec while I make sure everybody's getting dismissed.
This includes staff, just so you all know, except for Zach. And Ms. Dehaun, I assume you'll stay on, please.
I'm here.
All right, I think I've got everybody. I didn't accidentally lose any who needs to be here, did I?
I think you got everybody.
It looks like except the ones that need to be here, so.
So Zach is going to.
This conference will now be recorded.
I think they're returning to regular session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to return to regular session. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
And K R.
Yes.
And I'll just note there was no action taken as a result of the executive session.
Thank you, Zach. I was just about to say that.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be a city manager's report.
Uh, Mayor, a- as we've started this, we've, we have provided a written report. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions on that report. I don't really have anything specifically to highlight out of there. I will note, uh and I'm sure several of you all may have seen, heard, been contacted. We have a few potholes in the city, and we're obviously fully aware of that. And our crews will be out this next week addressing those, obviously, until we got the snow and the ice and the weather, we ride it out. Uh, it's not much you can do, and it's, you know, every city around is fighting the same thing. So our crews will be out working on potholes and 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 take care of those things. Um, I know the the other thing just going on uh over in the community center that's, I don't believe's in in here. Uh, they are doing some upgrades in the community center with the old cabinets, et cetera, that's being performed in-house by our two parks, whole time parks. So other than that, I don't have anything else that's question.
Mike, on the third or fourth point on your, the administration portion of the city manager report, are you able to forward on the um preliminary and final plat for the Compass Somebody project? With Wood Barn?
I can send that out to the council, sure. So they do things just just briefly. So um where we typically do the preliminary and final plat, I I think plats being more of a administrating function. And then we put on top of that the the development plan or some people call the site plan. The way I understand it, once they finish the, their preliminary plat is basically their site plan, and then the final plat's a final plat, so they can move from that phase into building permit. Obviously, they had to provide additional information that was at least in the packet of information that was presented. But I will send you what we have. Uh, I will tell you that we responded to that and that there were several uh just points that we wanted to make sure were were covered from drainage, you know, off-site drainage issues to the road access issues, to et cetera. So we, we didn't, we didn't take a position for or against, but we did provide written comments to the city that also been sent to their engineer of record.
Mike, could you elaborate a little bit on the comments that we sent? I did look at the um the plat and their plans, and it is not at all what I would consider light industrial. I think it would be a huge eyesore, uh one of the main entrances of our city.
Uh, well, the the comments were, uh, number one, at least on the preliminary plat, the alignment of one of the primary entrances that were, an entrance off of uh hundred tenth street did not align with the full access that we have in place on the plans, the roads we're currently building. Uh, and we noted that, you know, they would need to align their points of ingress, egress should align with those cross access points, that other access points may not be permitted uh from us. So that we we put those in there for a reason and location, uh which serve both sides of the road uh to ensure traffic safety. Um, we have some concerns about on the south end. Uh, initially, they showed a separate ax, a separate point coming on to a hundred and tenth street immediately adjacent to uh Speaker Road. Uh, we obviously said that can't have one road next to another road twenty feet apart. Uh, and so they went back and they said they're going to make improvements to the road, add right of way and make improvements to the road, which is fine, but but we need to know what those improvements are, what they include, what kind of access. So we're concerned about access off the south end of the property. And then just general storm drainings, especially storm drainings that would go uh from uh in southwest part or southeast part of the site, because that feeds into the Betts Creek Basin. So we just want to better understand what those flows are, whether any improvements need to be made, you know, storm pipe improvements under the road, et cetera. And then last, and maybe the biggest one, uh is the original plat showed the sewer just going up uh from the south part of the property up to the north part of the property along a hundred tenth into our sewer main at a hundred tenth and Billy South Parkway. And we've been pretty clear that unless the sewer improvements provide for additional development area in Edwardsville, that it has been our position, and I say ours collectively from the council, that we would not approve a connection port that did not provide for additional sewer in our city. And they are aware of that, and they're making other, you know, making other adjustments, which will need to come back before the council uh for approval or consideration. Those are the four main areas.
Um, have they spoken at all about a traffic study that the, what they're proposing are huge buildings that take up almost that whole lot of of land? Um, I can't imagine it would be considered light industrial anymore. Do we know how many trucks are going to be coming in and out of there? And then also what that internal mean for wear and tear on the new street we're investing in?
They did do a traffic study. Uh, I don't know what specifically it called for. I will say that the original traffic study showed a truck route, which is would be Billy South Parkway going to the west and then turning south. Uh, that was their initial proposal. There were some concerns about that as well. Uh, I do know they have improvements to Riverview Parkway as part of the requirement. So west of the improvements we make, uh which were just basically the intersection, so they'll have to make improvements to the west uh across there, basically to the western property line of that that parcel, that hundred fifty five acre parcel. That, I think they've always assumed a plan for larger buildings on that. I mean, the word light industrial certainly has some differing discussions of what is light industrial. But I think similar to what we have in in our park, our business park, whatever you want to call it, uh, that's the concept of what they're talking about. And clearly, their site plan shows, you know, large cross dock facilities to support distribution. Yeah, that's what they, that's what they're zoning. And again, that's the zoning and bonnet plan.
Right, and and I don't think it's a coincidence at all that they're putting it at the entrance of our city and not theirs. You know, we have an industrial park down at K thirty two, which is fine, and it's it's very useful down there. But I don't think most of our community wants sandwiched in by the industrial parks. So I just, I I would really push back on them as much as possible to be better neighbors to us um and reduce any visit, visibility that we have of huge industrial building. Truck, you know, trucks and all of that from a hundred and tenth and and south.
Okay, if there are no more comments, we appreciate your report, Mike, and we will now move into the council comments, starting with a comm, council member Stites.
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Margaret?
Um, just a few comments. I, uh, thank you, Mike, for addressing um potholes. I know the community is letting everybody know that there are several potholes. Um, hopefully, within the next, this week sometime, get those taken care of. I know it's just a Band-Aid, but we have a lot of work to be done on these streets. So um I know one of my neighbors, kind of a little, not too much damage, but a little bit of damage can happen when these potholes get away from us. So thank you for addressing that. I know Dusty's going to get his crew out on that. So um that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Garrett?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. I wanted to compliment the fire department and EMS services for taking such good care of the ambulances. Uh, I think it's really testament that they got like seven years out of those. And I appreciate that they're going to be able to get a new one, and maybe we can stagger in that second one sometime. I was curious about that sales tax. I, you know, I worry that, you know, people, if that's going to be coming up, that people might vote against that. So I don't know if we need to develop some kind of a strategy to make sure we can get that to go again so we can keep taking advantage of those little windfall of money that we come up with that really help us out. And the other thing is I didn't want anybody to think I I had any kind of misconceptions on that video sign. It was just that I was kind of looking forward to having a permanent, nice color sign in a, in a good spot. But I think that the portable sign will really be an asset, and I appreciate all your work on that, Dustin and and Mike and Zach and everybody. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Um, Carolyn?
Um, Mike, I've been kind of checking up on the COVID hubs for Wayne County. I remember before they said we'd start backing off of restrictions when we were at about ten percent positivity rate. Looks like we're about ten and a half percent. Have you heard of anything um for backing, backing on our businesses and and churches and masks and that whole deal?
Uh, I have not, but we have our weekly call tomorrow uh at eleven AM that that the mayor and I and Zach participate on each week. Uh, I imagine that will be a topic of discussion as, as you know, some other area counties have already started to uh reduce some of the 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 regulations. Not necessarily all of them, you know, mask and social distancing still seem to be in place. But, you know, eliminating hours and and restrictions on numbers of people seem to be the biggest change. So I expect that will be a discussion tomorrow, and I will leave that back to the council after that tomorrow. It's at eleven o'clock, so tomorrow afternoon, I'll leave that right here.
Okay, thanks. If if they don't bring it up, if you wouldn't mind, just remind them that 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 rate keeps dropping. And so it'd be a good time to start just talking about moving those, moving those back as as we progress. Um, are we going to, oh, sorry, Matt, sorry, Michael, is that?
I just said we will definitely bring it up, but I have a feeling it'll be brought up before they get to us. But uh, we're generally near the top of the meeting list, but my guess is uh we're not alone. But we're generally near the top of the meeting list, but my guess is we're not alone in that discussion. So I do imagine that we've discussed, but if not, we certainly will raise it. We have raised that a little bit, even at the last meeting, what are the plans for the season. So I know there's internal discussion going on with public health, but we just haven't gotten any reports of next steps yet.
Okay, perfect. I noticed some of the talk with soccer season and things like that coming up for the kids and them potentially having to wear masks while they're playing, which is a whole issue. So if we can get that resolved before that starts, that would be great. Are we, we're still working for updating sidewalk ordinance?
I'm sorry, it broke up a little bit.
Oh, I was wondering if we're still working toward updating our sidewalk ordinance?
Yes, we'll have probably two ordinances to the council after meeting related to the snow at heart, and the other one on the broader maintenance sidewalks. And so those will be at the next meeting.
That is, that's all I've got for tonight. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Jack Adams?
Okay, a couple of different things. I wanted to congratulate and commend the fire department on the two potentially lifesaving events, their involvement in this, and it really continues to speak to the professionalism of the department. And we're looking forward to hearing great positive outcomes about that. What will be done with the expiring ambulance, the one that's being replaced?
I don't know if Tim is on here, so I'll address it. So we're primarily looking at probably selling the unit. I will tell you, so one of the things going to research is, you know, some cities have used former ambulances and retrofitted the box for use around public works, generally around sewer, because you can keep things like water pumps and larger things like that in the back of them. So we may look at reusing it, that's one option. The other option may be simply just to probably hold it back for a period of time as a backup resource, just in case we lost. I don't, you know, at this point, I don't know that, I mean, we couldn't staff three ambulances and, you know, keep them all in use. You have to put equipment in them, meds in them, all those things. So I would imagine for at least this year, we will probably maintain it just as a backup unit inside out best to do it unless we're able to sell it at a reasonable price. And we're still trying to figure out what that would be.
Okay, yeah, those are all good ideas. I like those. It is paid in full, is that correct?
Yes, both the ambulances, so the ambulances when they originally purchased were actually out of the general fund. They were on five-year lease payments, and both of those have been paid and expired. One was on a 20, I think one was on a 2014 chassis, and the other was a 2015 chassis. So there's some time between the two of them. I will say the 2014 chassis and remount, we had more issues with, especially the box. If y'all recall, we had gone to one vendor, and that vendor basically failed to perform. And we had to go to a second vendor to fill the second box. So that first one, we had difficulties with it. So it's not just the, you know, it's not just the truck itself that is mounted on, these are on fan mounts. But, you know, the stuff inside the box doesn't work, doesn't matter how good the chassis is.
All right, I appreciate that. You know, since they're paid in full, and especially with that used box on the back, we probably are not going to get much for it at all. I mean, if we can use it here in the city, that would be great for uses like what you mentioned. So the other thing too, I just wanted to kind of report that the cemetery, public worker, was a public works and public spaces board is really functioning well. I'm very pleased we're into this, oh, gosh, what, nine months now, something like that? And I'm really pleased with how everyone's working together with it. I'm pleased with some of the new people we've got coming on board, or really nice additions to the board, very interested in the city. So I just wanted to let you know that the integration's gone very well, and there's a good amount of energy to move forward with. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. My comments are this, that I think in light of the possibility of relaxing regulations, I'm going to, I've made the decision to move back to in-person meetings. However, the city regulations does require us to wear masks at the meeting. So at the very next meeting, we will meet in person, but we will ask you to please honor and respect the city's position on wearing masks. And after that, we adjourn.